Twenty-sixth Selectmen's Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands firm, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all [inaudible].
Thank you. I have a number two approval of the minutes from February 12th and February 15th.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, corrections, deletions? No more favor?
Aye.
For Selectmen's comments, I'll put mine off until the end of the meeting. Citizens' comments. Before we start, I'd just like to say, we have a good lot of people here tonight, so we'd like to keep comments reasonable to a reasonable length, and if people are repeating themselves, I'm going to ask them to not. Gus, you're probably going to repeat yourself, so please don't.
He's supposed to go first.
He only has eight pages to read.
Is it on? Is there an on switch?
No.
It should be on.
Yeah? No, okay, well, just speak up then. Oh, I know. Tom Vanish.
This has happened before.
The battery died.
And it's the red light on saying that it's off.
Jeff, you got any ideas?
Well, while we're trying to work on that, I was wondering if we could speak to item eight and item fourteen on the agenda, and on the issue of the wastewater treatment for downtown, I've sent you folks a memo over the weekend, and I just wanted to, I had some experience with that, if you guys want to sit down and talk about it, because I think what we should be doing is not just the downtown. The last time we had a wastewater treatment study done in a community was about 1984, 1985. So we've grown tremendously since then, and I don't think we want to get in a position as Clinton, Westbrook, and old Saybrook are, where the state has come down and ordered them to facilitate wastewater treatment. I think we should try to be proactive on it. So I approve, amend you for doing this for downtown, but I think we should be doing it for the entire town. And the second thing is the, I'm sure a few people here might be interested in the issue of Academy Street School. I sent you a copy of the memo that I had written to you folks about eighteen months ago, and at that particular point in time, I thought the interest was just going to be in doing something with the building, but I recognized that with zoning laws and with the Foreign Marshals Code and with the building code, that it wouldn't be that clean cut, because a certain amount of land will have to go with that building primarily because of the off-street parking regulations that the town has in their planning and zoning regulations, and also because of the coverage. A certain amount, generally it's ten or fifteen percent lot coverage, which means if the building occupies two acres, you might need twenty acres of property, but that's an extreme example, but those are all considerations that I think the folks will have to take a look at when they suggest alternative uses of the building. You should take a look at the zoning regulations and the ZBA requirements. Phil, that's a...
Thanks, Gus.
How was that sound?
That's great.
Okay.
Joan Walker, thirty-nine, Stepping Stone Lane. I think it's fair to say that everyone in this room wants a resolution to Academy School. As a former member of your board, I know it's not easy to get to that resolution. People in this town value this property. There's historical value of one of the pioneers in education, Daniel Hand. There's sentimental value, all the people who went to that school and their kids who went to that school, and then there's the utilitarian value to the little leaguers, the tweens, the teens, and honestly, the parents of those kids who say, yes, you can go downtown and hang out there. I believe unless you seize this unique opportunity that's in front of you, it will be a waste of taxpayers' money to bring any of the one current options to referendum. At this particular moment in time, the town has an opportunity that it hasn't had in the past, and this is what it has, it has leverage. The town can leverage the Island School property as a residential property to ensure that the Academy building has a mixed commercial use and that the town maintains the green space, or some kind of mixed use. In order for this to happen, the Board of Ed would have to pass a resolution that upon closing the school, it will be returned to the town immediately. Any delay, like what happened with Academy, which was a year or two just sitting in the wind, will basically, you know, kill this process. Once the resolution is passed, and that can be passed within this Board of Ed's purview, a new AP can be designed outlining the requirements that the town should be remaining the green space, put Academy School up for sale, but only as part of a bundle with Island Avenue and its property. If you choose to move forward with the current options, I ask that the following information be available to the public so that we know exactly what is being voted on, and our trust can be gained and true transparency can be ensured. First would be a letter from Town Council with an opinion that the property can be sold and that it can be used for purposes other than education. The independent appraisal that was referenced by the First Selectmen with a valuation of about a million dollars should also be available for the public to see. The agreement between the town and First Congregational Church regarding the use of the town green, so that everybody understands what that uses. The cost of building two new baseball fields at Brown to replace those that are being taken away at Academy. An understanding of how the money from the sale of the property is being used. Are some of the dollars being earmarked to replace those fields, or how would that earmarking be done? I would suggest a letter from the Historical Society endorsing any project, because they are ultimately one of the people involved, or one of the organization involved. A letter from the Deacon John Graves Foundation, since they are a historical neighbor of this property. And then I ask that a letter be signed to each member of the Board of Selectmen stating that they will not personally profit from the current or future real estate deals on this property, or that they repuse themselves from the vote. Thank you for your time.
Chris Scranton, one hundred Boston Post Road, and I'm actually a distant descendant of Daniel Hand. My grandfather was given his home on one oh eight Boston Post Road from Daniel Hand, and we have, we have a pretty keen interest in what happens to Hand Academy. I have been here at previous meetings and questioned the release from the American Missionary Association that was granted in nineteen fifty-eight that supposedly releases the town of the three conditions that were put on Hand Academy at the time he gave it to us, and you had stated that you had gotten an answer from your town attorneys thinking that it was probably okay. It wasn't definitive. I have talked to some lawyer people, and they pretty much said the same thing, that it isn't totally cut in stone, that the conditions of the release were all three of the conditions that Daniel Hand put on the property. The only one it mentions was that the new high school should be named Daniel Hand High School. It didn't mention the fact that it should not go to waste and that it should always be used for educational purposes. And if the town continues to go forward with this, I think my family probably will question this and maybe press it further to have a judge or somebody else make this permanent decision, and not just the town attorney, because I'm sure he's kind of looking out for the town and not the other people's. Now I want to get to the property in itself. This town, that vacant, that land has been vacant forever, and I have a feeling that if we build on that particular property fifty years, twenty-five years, a hundred years from now, we're going to regret the fact that we did that. And I think that the town, the most valuable piece of property the town owns is probably the surf club. The second most is the town green, which the town owns. And I can foresee that five years down the road, the congregational church is not, maybe they're not happy looking at the back of forty-five condominiums, and they just tell the town that nothing will ever happen on the green again. And where would the town be if they couldn't utilize for all the civic organizations that have things going on in town? And unless we get a one-hundred or two-hundred-year absolute permanent written legal document that the church will continue to let the town use that green, I think we're in big trouble to fill the baseball fields up with pretty ugly condominiums. Thank you.
Good evening. Phil Moore-McPherson from Everett's Lane, and I'm not going to be speaking a lot about Academy, so surprise, surprise. I am going to make a couple of comments about the State of the Union, excuse me, the State of the Town address that we gave. Well, we have a better, a higher bond rating than the State of the Union, so. The State of the Town address that was last month, I'm glad to hear that you have, working on a nice surplus, and I have a couple of ideas about what to do with that surplus. Y'all are smart people, so you've probably already thought of these, but just in case, I would suggest putting at least a hundred thousand dollars into the debt service reserve. I noticed on the chart that you had that there's a little blip coming up of a hundred grand, so that's exactly why that reserve is set up, and so that would smooth it out for next year. I would also suggest that you put some additional money into the pensions. Yes, we're well-funded at seventy-plus percent. That's pretty good by Connecticut standards, but at the, in addition to the annual required contributions that we make, anytime we can make extra contributions to that, it sits there earning seven percent, which is pretty good in these days and times, and will pay back over the twenty-year horizon for the pensions, it'll pay the taxpayer back four times whatever it is that you all put in there. So I would suggest, and I see some heads nodding, so you're already on top of it. I'm sure Stacy is keeping you appraised on all those good things. One thing from the State of the Town that I was not too happy to hear was the fact that y'all might be planning on issuing debt to look after things that we have typically saved up for in our, in our reserve funds. Historically, at least within recent memory, Madison is only borrowed for either land or buildings. We've not followed the slippery slope lead of the State of Connecticut and some of our fellow towns that are now in dire trouble of kicking those cans down the road by borrowing money and then having to pay it back. So I would urge you to not go that route and to continue to do what we've always done, and that is to put adequate capital reserve funds in each budget so that we don't have to go all of a sudden borrowing money. And then as a sad comment about that, and I'm sure you're aware that the, the monies that we have in these reserve funds are in fact earning us interest. So instead of paying interest on some bonds that we've maybe would have issued, we're actually getting interest on the, on the reserve funds that we have. And Stacy, I'm sure can bring you up today, we're talking six figures a year up, as I recall, so it's not insignificant. So that's mainly what I wanted to cover on some of these other issues. I did have a couple of questions about the, or comments about the Academy. One of them, I wasn't going to comment, except I heard some prior comments. My recollection, and I'll have to check minutes and so forth, is that the reason it took a couple of years after Academy closed for the Board of Ed to turn it over to Tom, was we went, wanted to be very careful to make sure that we would not cross that legal line. And we spent a couple, Al, you remember that, that we waited, and the Board of Ed waited until we had a very definitive legal opinions that said, yeah, you're free to do it, and so that's, that's why we turned it over. And Chris, I'm sorry if we, something should have happened, and I don't think your family will get it, sorry about that, but...
We're not looking for it.
I know you're not, okay. So I just wanted to give that little recollection. And then finally, on the, on the Academy, trusting that at some point, after you compile all the answers and numbers from the survey that you all very nicely put out, that you'll make that available, including the comments that get turned in. I'm hoping that it will become public knowledge. Thank you, sir.
Ross Fahey from eighty-seven Bishop Lane. I have a question on the survey that was sent out, I don't know if it was a year and a half ago, or when it was done, but it did say mixed use, and the people that I talked about with the mixed use, they were confused. They thought it was for arts and other retail space, and we were all under the assumption that it was only the building. I believe that we should all have a new survey sent out, and, because if you look at it, it says other town uses for thirty-five percent, retail thirty percent, housing twenty-six percent, school twenty-one, office space eighteen. But if you put the other town uses and the office space together, it's higher than your forty-seven percent mixed use, or your retail and your office space together, it's forty-eight percent, so that's more than your mixed use. I want to know who actually profits from this. Is it going to be the consultants, the developers, and the real estate agents? From what I understand, we're only going to collect four hundred thousand, that's if every unit is sold. So I just ask that everybody, we send out another survey for us to understand the real use of the whole property, not just the building. Thank you.
Catherine Hunter, thirty-one Scotland Avenue. You may have seen our table out here, you may have seen us at the public hearing, you may have seen some of us before the hearings for the proposals. We're a loose group of folks who have different beliefs and thoughts about Academy and what to do. I think that I could represent that the common denominator is that we all believe that the referendum must be a fair one. We've been waiting for fourteen years, and some people here longer, to have a chance to vote on what to do about Academy School. I know that this development proposal timeline goes back to two thousand and sixteen, but in fact, the timeline goes back much further. I came to town in two thousand and two. At that time, we were, the folks were talking about whether or not to take Academy offline. After that, when it was taken offline, the discussion was whether or not it could be reopened. In all fairness, we should at least start the timeline at two thousand and eleven, when the school was turned over to the town and the discussion became what to do about the building. For all of this time, until two thousand and sixteen, the discussion has been what to do about the building. I think I can say fairly for the folks who are trying to get together and to oppose this development, that we have an ideological split with the Board of Selectmen. I think Tom Vanish looks at that building and those fields, and he sees a business opportunity. I don't. I see a building that's been neglected, I see a piece of Madison's history, I see fields that are used all the time. It was never a question of whether or not the fields were deteriorating and unused, and what do we need to do with them? And what we're doing is, we're giving a developer five acres of land to induce him to fix up a building, that's like the tail wag on the dog. I would like to say that with respect to the bottom line here, if you crunch the numbers, not only do we not have sufficient numbers to really evaluate these four proposals, they're all very preliminary, they're all at the concept stage here. I don't know how the referendum's going to work, whether we're supposed to vote on a proposal and then the Board of Selectmen have the decision and the right to determine all aspects of the deal. I don't know if we ever get another bite at the apple. I can tell you that representations that this will cost the town nothing are absolutely not true, not because of anything disingenuous, but there's going to be somewhere between five hundred thousand and a million dollars in transaction costs. Consultants are expensive. Consultants are very expensive. I think we were at four hundred thousand on the transaction side just to buy the Griswold Park, never mind develop it. So why are we doing this? For those folks who support the development, I'm not the best mathematician in the world, but I've been in the commercial real estate field for over thirty years. When we look at this, perhaps the only upside is the tax revenues. Tom has said he wants to put five acres on the grand list. If you crunch the highest density, highest sale prices, you're looking at less than point zero five percent of the grand list, and for me, that's not worth it. I think we've seen and heard from probably three categories of folks in the last few weeks who have come to us. One of the categories are folks who would like to see the land undeveloped. They're even willing to see this building go down if it's so deteriorated and it's too expensive to renovate it. They're willing to see the building taken down and have this space remain open and as parklands for people. I fall in the middle category. I think we should issue an RFP for an adaptive reuse of this building. If we don't prioritize revenues and tax revenues, and we're willing to give five acres of land in a building to a developer, let's give just the building to somebody and see what they'll do. I understand about the carrot and the dangle to do this, but I don't think that we can say definitively that there's nobody out here who would fix up this building, especially if it was for a community use. And then there are folks who are in favor of development. I believe in democracy, but I think this referendum needs to be a fair one, and to be a fair one, we need to have other options represented. Thank you.
Okay, we move on?
Can I, can I speak?
Sure.
My name is Kathleen Marsh, thirty-eight Sylvan Road. I broke my baby finger in Academy Street School and playing basketball in the gym when I was your age, sixth grade. I'm a Daniel Hand graduate, and I've raised two children here. Artie Simons, I remember you from basketball. I'm old.
You were on the same team back then?
No. My, my kids have grown up with your kids, Bruce, playing little league soccer and baseball on the field. I am totally opposed to giving up five acres of land in our historic district. I had an email conversation with John Lind. He is the chairperson of the Historic District Commission, and Joan Walker, I don't know where you are, I think that's the commission that has something to do with this decision and not the Historical Society, which is a wholly different thing. But I was shocked, this gentleman who runs this committee, who might have some sort of decision-making power over this, doesn't even know about the plans. I find that kind of, you know, offensive, I suppose. Anyway, I don't want it sold, and Tom, I really feel bad for you, if you're going to be the selectman, who is going to be known as the one who gave up five acres in the historic district. Growing up in this town in the sixties, we saved Surf Club, we saved Garvin Point, you know, and now you're going to go and give up the jewel of our town? On advice of a lawyer that I know, he says to me that there's a Connecticut general statute, seven dash one-three-one N, the Taking of Land Intended for Use of a Park. Evidently, in nineteen twenty-two, Mr. Scranton, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, the town purchased the land behind Academy, it was a white house, and they purchased it for the use of a playground. The Connecticut statute in nineteen seventy-four that was created says that you cannot convert open space to a non-park. It triggers a state statute, and the state statute basically reads, God, I'm shaking, Tom, this is what you're doing to me. The Taking of Land Previously Intended for Use of a Park or Any Other Recreational Open Spaces. If any municipality takes any land for a highway or other purposes, which the land was purchased for a park or recreational, and again, nineteen twenty-two, was purchased as a playground, for which bonds were issued, bonds were issued in nineteen twenty-two, or which has been dedicated for such purposes, such municipality shall provide a comparable replacement land, at least equal to the value and the unit area size to the value, and per the unit area size of the land taken, provided before such municipality takes such land for a highway or other purposes, it shall hold a public hearing in addition to any public hearing required by section thirteen A dash fifty-eight, or by any other section of the general statutes, or by any other act of city charter, at such public hearing, and it goes on and on. But basically, this was triggered four times in the state of Connecticut. One time, it was triggered by the city of Hartford, that was trying to expand a park. They were trying to straighten out a city street, and they were going to clog her apart, and the people got really mad, and they had to provide another park space. So what I want to know from, from you folks is, if you're taking away that park that people play frisbee on, that they walk dogs on, that they ride their bikes on, if you take away the kids' little league, where are you going to find another piece of land? And how much is that going to cost the town of Madison? Sorry?
I'm saying downtown, where are we going to find more money?
Well, you know, it's a problem, and I think it's a financial constraint that you guys are going to have. So again, in closing, I'm emotional about this, because I've seen mistakes made in this town. I've seen a sucky-looking Brown school that I had to go to, I was the first class to enter that school, and I had nothing but problems. I've seen two gyms, not one, but this is the only town in America that has built two new gyms that were not regulation-sized and we couldn't play basketball. Like, hello! I was, what, sixteen years old saying, what the hell? What happened there? You know? So, so, you know, we can make more mistakes here, and it's just going to cost us no more. We didn't buy the land across from the high school, and we had an opportunity to have fields right across from the high school. So, you know, at the police station, they said, oh, it's expandable? No, it wasn't expandable, we had to pay another five million down the road. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Art Simon, sixty-five Bartlett Drive. I think the process has been really good for the most part, so I don't have a problem with the process. I'm just going to leave my comments to two, two questions. First of all, what, what action are the Board of Selectmen planning on taking tonight, if any, or is this just a listening session for you guys? What is, what is the plan?
It's just public, we don't...
Okay, okay. So I didn't know if there was an agenda item on Academy Street School on tonight's agenda.
Yes, there is.
It's usually one of the plans.
Okay, that's what I want to hear somebody say.
Discuss only.
Says discuss?
There's no action.
Okay, thank you. And the second thing is, this may be premature, but do you have any, at least inkling of what the ultimate referendum question will say? Okay, so we don't, we don't know yet, because that's kind of important. Okay, what the referendum question says is crucial to the whole of them. Okay, thanks.
Catherine Flynn-Dominant, I'm from Comstock, Georgia, in Madison. I've heard a lot of people bring up numbers and all kinds of issues. I'm really speaking from the heart. I'm a lifetime Madison resident.
It's usually one of the plans.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear somebody say.
Discuss only.
Says discuss?
There's no action.
Okay, thank you. And the second thing is, this may be premature, but do you have any, at least inkling of what the ultimate referendum question will say? Okay, so we don't, we don't know yet, 'cause that's kind of important. Okay, what the referendum question says is crucial to the whole of them. Okay, thanks.
Catherine Flynn-Dominant, I'm under Thomas Doggedog in Madison. I've heard a lot of people bring up numbers and all kinds of issues. I'm really speaking from the heart. I'm a lifetime Madison resident. I've been here since I was five. I've even played on those fields. I come out of St. Margaret's on a Sunday and look across that DePaulic Field and you see the Congregational Church. I don't want to look at 24, 48, 78 condos all along that area. It would just be a shame, and what I'm asking for is a vote, a fair vote. I believe in the process. The more, and I apologize to you, Mr. Harva, I don't know where we all were when you, when you had this, I mean, you brought it up, I mean, I must've had little kids and I was busy and, I don't know. But I'm here now, and most people that I talked to really did not understand that it included the land. All of this time, they thought it was just the building. And I think maybe that's why they were so flipped, or didn't show up, or whatever, because they were like, well, whatever they do, the building is better than what's there now. So I'm asking for a fair vote. I believe in the process and that if the town votes to go ahead, I won't like it, but I'll have to live with it.
Number five, discuss the action approved, calling a public hearing on Monday, March 26, 2018 as follows.
Which way?
Yeah. So I move that we set a, what is this gonna be, is this gonna be a public hearing? So the notice will be, the legal voters of the town of Madison are hereby warned and notified that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 26, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Town Campus Room A, this room. Purpose of this meeting is to hear comment on, one, the 2018 Small Cities Community Development Program application process for Concord Meadows Retirement Community, and, two, an ordinance prohibiting waste associated with natural gas and oil extraction.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we have an audience, we should take advantage of that. And just maybe explain what these things are?
Okay. The Small Cities Community Development Program application is for renovations to be done to Concord Meadows by virtue of a grant from the federal government. It's a grant that will go through us to Concord Meadows, so it doesn't cost the town anything to do this, but they need our sponsorship as a town. And the ordinance prohibiting waste associated with natural gas and oil extraction is the 罰用 waste ordinance that people have been talking about.
Excuse me, Tom, what are they going to do?
Sorry? They're replacing the windows, increasing, they're fixing a lot of the ADA, non-compliant bathrooms, and people like that. So there's one section that they did, like, redo, because it's old and new-sitting. They replaced the heaters, they got electric heaters. Which way the motion is second? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me.
For the sake of, Tom?
Excuse me, sir?
You're not allowed to ask questions.
I'm not allowed to ask a question?
No.
Oh, I thought somebody asked a question, sorry.
No, it's during public comment.
Tom, I, I move that we take item number 14, the discussion of Academy Schools, and move it to new item six.
How about 5A?
5A.
5A will work.
Motion of second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So discuss Academy School Development Proposals.
Right.
So we had two evenings of proposals from developers, and we had one public hearing, where we had good turnout at all three of those evenings. And I think we're hearing from people that we need to slow down the process and take a look at what's going on and see what we do here. So I think we're all amenable to that. Don't be trying to rerun anything through here, but we're trying to do, we're trying to do the best thing for our town. And in the context of the primary that we had tonight, Budget Workshop, where we understood that the state is cutting us $1,000,002 in funds this year, we need to find other ways to make up our revenues. And so there are all different things that we can do. Our grant list is growing, it's growing fairly well, but it's not growing fast enough to meet the reductions that we're seeing from the state. The state's intention is to zero us out of all aid, which used to be something in the area of $10 million, and in the recent past, has been as much as $3.5 million. And we're down to $1,000,002 now?
Well, we're looking at $400,000 next year.
Okay. So this is all because the state has serious fiscal problems that they're not dealing with, and they're dealing with it by cutting our aid. By the way, this is all money that we sent to the state, $66 million, I think it is, annually, citizens of Madison paying state income taxes to the state of Connecticut. And they proposed to give us none of it back. But I'm just kinda setting the stage, you guys?
You know, I just would like to maybe speak to a couple of things. You know, when we started this process a little over a year ago, or about a year ago, you know, we certainly had good public engagement, and I appreciate all the comments that the inclusion of the land is a surprise. Had you been in those meetings, it wouldn't have been a surprise, it was one of the very specific questions that was asked. But, as has been observed tonight, the process isn't over. So now that we have awoken the community, there is time for everybody's input. So this process is not gonna roll over anybody's sensibility or perspective. Our goal all along has been to provide a solution to the taxpayers that is reasonable and adoptable. It is not a personal agenda. I don't know the, there was a hint that maybe we are going to profit personally from this. I don't know how that would happen. Quite frankly, I'm a little troubled by the accusation. But you're here now, and we're listening now, and we have every intention of taking your input into context in the process. So if you're worried that somehow this is going to roll over what you believe is the majority of the community, it simply isn't, isn't gonna happen. I mean, I, I will, I will climb out on a limb and say, if the rest of my selectmen don't agree with me, I will make sure that that doesn't happen. But I am safe in the knowledge that the rest of my selectmen, fellow selectmen, agree with me. So we understand that there are differences of opinions, we want to facilitate the process as best as possible, to make sure that everybody has a chance to express their viewpoints, and we wanna make sure that we arrive at what is best for the community, right? All of you, and all of us. I love that we, that we're in a community where we all throw on the table how many decades we've been in this town, and I'm sorry, I've only been here since 1978. The other thing, and Joan brought this up in her comments, and I think it's a good one to remember, the idea of Island Avenue is actually a really intriguing idea. I mean, I think you hear it and you go, hm, hadn't thought of that, but maybe we can make that work. Here's the catch, folks. As far as we know officially, the Board of Education is simply closing the school. As of the moment, they have taken no action to indicate to us that they are handing it over to the town. So I would invite all of you to go to a Board of Ed meeting and express to them how important that property is as it relates to Academy, and ask them to take that formal action, to set a date, to, to hand the town the property, and that way it would enable us to take that into consideration. So we are not trying to obstruct the process here in any ways, I understand, the process is not with this board right now. And you won't surprise them when you show up, I've already talked to the Chair of the Board of Ed, so she knows that this is a step that the board has to take, but certainly seeing engagement from the community, like you folks, is never a bad thing. So, and, and just for the benefit of everyone, you know, I was taking notes during the hearing, and tonight was, was more of the same. Those people who preferred development seem to be leaning towards the Graylock or the Women's Institute. I did not hear a lot of support for the other ones. I heard a lot of support for carving out the fields from the, from the property. That certainly was, was a theme, I think, as Catherine said. So, you know, other than that, I've said, I've said enough, I'll let you guys, I'll let you guys talk now. And I may still say something more, this is a discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna go next. I, I showed up with some comments from my fellow selectmen. I've heard a lot over the last few weeks from the community, and let me tell you what I think I heard. First thing I heard was that the process we set up to understand what a for-profit developer would do with the property was a very good process, and we actually got some useful information back. And that we answered one of the questions, what would a for-profit developer do with that property? But what I've also heard from the public is that there were other options that haven't yet been considered and studied, and are just as valid to present to the public. And those options have to do with continuing to have the town maintain ownership of the land, to continue to have the town make use of that building for municipal purposes, for purposes of public benefit, for purpose of the commonwealth of the citizens of this town. And I think we haven't developed that option yet in order to present the voters with some fair choices about a for-profit housing development, or a continued municipal use of the town. What would that cost? How would we make use of it? How would our citizens benefit from the town continuing to own that building? Some people call that an adaptive reuse, but I think that's an option that absolutely needs to be studied. I heard the public say selling this land would be an awfully steep price to pay for the cost of rejuvenating that building, and that before we do that, we as town officials and you as the electorate of the town that make the final decision, need to proceed very carefully, making sure you have all the information available about the options that are possible. I think also, as Bruce has started to say, there are new factors afoot here. Suddenly, Academy, the Island Avenue School has been presented to us as another possible way to think about the use of our assets downtown. With those thoughts in mind, I wanted to see if I could tie this in to something else that the Board of Selectmen is currently contemplating. We've been talking about developing a strategic plan for the town. Those conversations have been taking place here at the selectmen meetings over the last few months. And it occurs to me that as we're studying the strategic direction of this town, we might consider adding to that study an examination of the strategic uses of the buildings that this town currently owns. Because we suddenly have a number of buildings and possibilities, all of which impact on each other. The relationship between the seat of government here at Town Campus, the possible use of the seat of government on the town green are one example of that. The use of Island Avenue School as another potential development property is another factor that has suddenly presented itself. So rather than we as a board and you as a community looking at these buildings one at a time, I believe it's time to look at all of these buildings as part of the strategic plan of where we wanna go in this town. The town does have a general guidance document, which is developed every 10 years, it's online, it's called the Plan of Conservation and Development. It's developed by our Planning and Zoning Commission, and then it is approved by town officials like this Board of Selectmen. The guiding principle in that Plan of Conservation and Development, the last one of which was developed in 2013, is that Madison residents consistently advocate for maintaining the overall character and quality of life in Madison. These attributes are what attracted them to come to this community, and clearly indicated that Madison residents want to pass these attributes onto future generations. And so if that is the feeling of the electorate, then I think it behooves us as town officials to develop options for you which contain all of the possibilities, only one of which is a for-profit housing development on the town green. So I'm gonna urge my fellow selectmen to slow down the process, and for us to continue, consider adding this to our strategic study, so that we can present to the voters a series of options about how to use a number of these buildings which are suddenly in a state of transition. And so, my friends, I, I hope we slow things down.
Do you have a timeframe in mind? Because a strategic plan will take us the better part of a year or more. Are you thinking, is that the time scale you're thinking of?
However long it takes, I, the, the strategic study of the buildings may be separate from other parts of the strategic study. I don't know whether they all have to proceed in lockstep or not. We haven't yet discussed that, but I think we should. It's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I wanna echo what Al was saying relative to the, the building too. You know, not only is it a historic building, and some of the things that, you know, many of you have already pointed out relative to the beauty and of the town, and why we have all come to the town, we all have history in some way, shape, or form with the town. But at the end of the day, I think we've gotta be conscious of not treating each building as a one-off. You know, we need to be looking at things in concert, in the context of a plan, and making sure that we do have a roadmap for the success of our overall town. I think too often, I've seen us look at individual facilities as one-offs, and I think this is an opportunity to really think about things in a more broad way. Certainly, the, you know, the OLM situation has now come on board as something that is causing a wrinkle in the system. Island Avenue now coming on board as a new opportunity, a new building that we might be able to leverage for development or for alternative uses. I think we need to be open to any and all options here in the town. I have to admit, I am conflicted. I was, full disclosure, I was the Little League president, as was Tom, for many, many years here in town. And I've played on those fields, my kids continue to play on those fields every Sunday afternoon with Buddy Baseball, a program that was developed for special needs kids in town. And, you know, I have tears in my eyes every single Sunday watching kids play baseball. I would be saddened if those fields left our community. But at the same token, I think we've gotta be thinking about this thing not only from an economic development standpoint, from a overall community standpoint, there's a lot of factors. This is not an easy decision, as you all can tell, as we're wrestling with this as individuals and as a body here, as a Board of Selectmen. So I would echo what Al said, though, you know, slowing down the process, do I know what the timeline is? Absolutely not. But I think in fairness to options, looking at options, I've heard a lot of words come up about, you know, adaptive reuse, you know, whether that's something we should be considering or not. I don't know the answer. But I think we need to be thoughtful in our response here to you in the community, to make sure that we're representing what you ultimately want. The survey, to me, is somewhat troubling, in the sense that it has come up quite a few times in our, in our public hearings, where you have told us that the survey was confusing, that it represented the building and the building only, and that you didn't understand that it was representative of the 5.1 acres. And I think that's something that we need to be thinking about. So I, you know, I'm certainly open to any and all options at this point, I'm not closing the door on any. Do I have my two favorites? Sure. But I think we've got some more work to do. I, I can't remember, I think it was Mr. Davis who pointed out in one of the public hearings, that once you give up this space, you never get it back. And that, that resonated with me. And I think that's something we've gotta be, we've gotta really be thinking about here. It's a, it's a big decision we're undertaking.
I just, I just wanna add, and I've, you know, known Gus for many, many years, and other things, and I know that you were involved in studying, I don't know how many years ago, you could tell me, the use of the, of Academy, what the best purpose of Academy School was, you know, do you, does the town retain? You know, do you, does the town retain it? Do you sell it to a developer? You know, the biggest issue here with that building, and I think we've not been able to cite this, is the remediation on this is huge, absolutely huge. So I don't disagree with, and I feel conflicted myself based on, you know, the last several, two weeks of the hearings. And I also, you know, have a couple of proposals that I think would work well. But again, we're a community, and we have to decide what we want to do with this property as a community. But I think we really need to, before we really dive into it, I think we need to understand the parameters of, unfortunately, just the financial cost of that building, because that could stop many things right in its tracks. And I think that's the thing that I sleep on every night, because it's going to be very expensive. So let's be realistic there.
Gene, what are the problems with this whole situation? Since the building closed in 2004, that things keep coming up that shift the whole concept and, you know, the Island Avenue school coming up now.
Are you allowed to talk?
Yeah, I mean, I guess one other just thought. I mean, I was jotting down notes from the hearings, and, you know, I keep thinking about some of the things with our Madison Youth and Family Services that we've talked about over the last couple of months, and the notion of a teen center came up. And so that's another idea. You know, whether that's in concert with maybe the theater that was proposed, maybe there's multi-use opportunities. But I think there's some really interesting ideas that were brought up that could be really nice fits for our town and frankly, really needed in our town.
Thank you. Number six.
Wait a minute, Tom. I think we have the public some statement about what's next. What are we gonna be doing here? Are we, as a Board of Selectmen, gonna put this on the next agenda?
We'll put it on the agenda, and actually, I think we have a public hearing.
A public hearing of what?
Whatever we, I mean, a lot of things, we need to talk about the things that come up.
So would the thought be, maybe to have a public hearing to just continue to hear from the public on creative options, maybe?
Whatever, whatever they want to talk about.
Yeah? Okay. I wasn't sure if it was reacting to the, you know, are we considering whittling down the four developers to less before we move that forward?
I think we all have a feeling that it's not time to do that yet. We need to, you know, explore this a little bit more as most people have four or five seats.
I love it. That's great.
Number six. Discuss, and you want to stay for this? You want to stay for this, because this is about the Girl Scouts. Discuss and take action to approve, March 12, 2018, as Girl Scout Day in the town of Madison.
You have the proclamation. I move that we make March 12, 2018, Girl Scout Day in the town of Madison.
Second.
I want to read the proclamation. This was created by Girl Scouts for us so that you people, and it's a great way to get proud of it, can hear what they're doing, and this proclamation tells a lot of things out. So proclamation is celebrating Girl Scout Day and the importance of girls' leadership development. Whereas Girl Scouts is recognized as the national leader with providing the best leadership development experience in the world for girls, whereas Girl Scouts brings time-tested methods and research-backed programs that speak to the strengths of girl leadership development backed by more than 100 years of experience and expertise in the field. And whereas in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potentials through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connecting with others in a multicultural environment. And whereas Girl Scout is continuing a legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and the world in its second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country and the world a better place. And whereas Girl Scout offers hands-on, girl-led, girl-centered learning in STEM, the outdoors and entrepreneurship, and abundant opportunities to develop invaluable life skills, helping all girls take the lead early and often. And whereas Only Girl Scouts offers girls a one-of-a-kind opportunity to become a Gold Award Girl Scout by engaging in leadership at the highest levels while addressing the issue they feel passionately about. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor a Girl Scout can earn, acknowledges each recipient's power and dedication to not only bettering herself, but to making the world a better place for others. And whereas Girl Scouts was founded in 1912 by Julia Gordon-Lau, whose life mission was to build girls with courage, confidence, and character, and through her legacy continues to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country. And whereas today, more than 50 million American women are Girl Scout alumni, and 2.6 million girls and adult volunteers are active members. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen in the town of Madison, hereby applaud the Girl Scout movement and Girl Scouts of Connecticut and recognize March 12, 2018, as Girl Scout Day in celebration and recognition of girl-led, all-girls-based, where girls thrive and develop their talents and leadership. Dated at Madison, Connecticut, this 26th day of February, 2018.
Can we ask a vote? We gotta vote.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven. Discuss and take action to approve the first election sign on new water tank installation for the state of Connecticut.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
So you want to just, you mentioned this, well, you mentioned it in the town meeting, right? I've seen you do it a couple of times at Board of Finance and a couple of times in your comments here, but now that it looks like something's gonna happen, maybe it's worth.
Yeah, so we've been talking, we've been talking about putting a new water tank, 3 million gallon water tank over in Ridge Road, Rushy Waste Site and Boky Way Site. And so they finally come to us with their final plans. Dave's been involved with that.
Tom, do we need to see the application before we authorize you to sign it?
These are just, Dave, you want to explain what the paperwork is?
Yeah, so it's a proposal to build a tank on town property. So they're acting as the applicant. Typically, what the town does is sign as the authorized agent, as the owner of the property. There's two applications. One is a variance application due to the tank's location to the right-of-way that's within the Boky Way site. It's a little bit of a technicality on the variance. The other is a planning and zoning special exception permit application. And then a third component, which is not an application, is an 824 referral. So before the selectmen would authorize something like this, you have to do a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission under Section 24, the connected general statutes. So as part of their review for the various specific details of the proposal, the commission will also weigh in on the 824. So they'll tell you, yes, this is a consistent use of town property, they recommend you afford with it, or they wouldn't recommend it for whatever reason.
You're always very impressive with your answers.
So we're really just authorizing Tom to begin the process?
Yes, just beginning the process.
This is just the housekeeping.
There's a public hearing components to both applications, so it's just a housekeeping issue.
And where does P&amp;Z fall into this? So does P&amp;Z have to approve things before we finally approve things, or how does that?
Well, they can approve the municipal application and recommend a positive referral on the 824, or nothing happens until you guys actually.
I think I'm all set. I think in general, we should see things before we authorize you to sign them. I'm familiar with this, and I'm not terribly concerned about it. I just think it's a good principle for us to, if we're gonna ask you to sign something, we ought to at least see it.
Not fairness to Tom, but just as a little bit of background, they're very eager to move forward and submitted their application and got everything going towards the public hearing, because they have a real interest in trying to, I guess, get the public involved in the process right away. So I'm sure Tom was quite aware that they were ready to submit their application.
I'm okay, Tom.
Anyway, so the benefit of this, in addition to broader pressure for the town, is they'll be picking up nine fire hydrants along Ridge Road and Green Road. And people along those streets will be able to get water serviced.
Any way we could encourage them to pick up even more homes?
I think if we come, you know, once the initial target is done, they are stubby enough, they can expand. So, you know, they can pick up side roads and they can go wherever they want to go depending on what their demands. Big help we'd really need for customers.
Do we have any leverage with them on this? So many homeowners I talked to would love to connect, though.
And they'll connect you, but they're gonna charge you for it.
Yeah, but still, in most neighborhoods in town, it's not even offered. I'm just wondering whether we had any leverage to help them accelerate that building out?
Well, the leverage is, I think the water company is gonna go to all the flooding property owners in advance of extending the water line. It's cheaper to connect and do it when the road is open. And I guess they're offering incentive, basically, as long as you tie in, it can be certain for a number of years. They throw two years out as a potential option, that they will go ahead and run the line in advance while the road's open. So it's a little bit of incentive from a cost structure standpoint, also from the standpoint of you don't need to commit.
How about additional neighborhoods that aren't currently identified with this project? Do we have any leverage in encouraging them to build out further?
We've been talking to them about it. There's some interest in going, continuing down Ridge Road into that neighborhood there. But it's gonna have to be continuous neighborhood. They're not gonna go over a kilometer.
My neighborhood's out of the question?
So for now, yeah. I mean, I mean.
Is Al trying to get water in this? Is that what I'm thinking?
I think that's what I'm hearing, is Al wants water.
Yeah, I think, you know.
You have a lake behind you.
I think it's one of those things that will develop over time, but they gotta get this in first.
Do we even vote? We didn't vote, did we?
We haven't.
You have a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight. Discuss and take action to approve the proposal from Weston Sampson to evaluate the shared wastewater concept for Academy School.
So moved?
Second.
You want to talk about it?
I don't know how it ties into the previous conversation, so I hope that you guys should talk or something.
Has any thought been given to the suggestion Gus made about studying the whole town?
That's what WPCA does. You know, I mean, that's within their purview.
WPCA has requested that, at least since I've been here probably a couple of years in running.
Couple of times. It's a six-figure number?
Yes, as part of the budget cycle, and it hasn't been granted. I don't know if they asked for it this year or not, but it's a large enough dollar figure that it necessitates a request through the CIP or something more formal than.
Dave, are we under any regulatory mandate?
In fact, you know, Gus mentioned Clinton and Westbrook, and they have specific problems that they have to deal with. We don't have those problems, and we don't have, you know, if you talk to our town secretary and our public director, he's not concerned about those issues becoming issues for Madison.
This is really to evaluate the wastewater processing capacity of the land there, right?
Specifically, the concept of a shared wastewater facility, which would be constructed by a private entity and shared.
So creation of some sort of authority, a town authority?
It's a good thing to pursue. I meet after tonight, be honest with you, I think maybe we keep it on the agenda for another meeting and detail a little bit further what the process might be for Academy, so we're not tying it specifically to any kind of the proposal process. So I would.
Yeah, I do in favor of table.
I kind of tend to agree. I was wondering about timeline, too, so I think that's a good idea. So do, Lauren, we've made the motion, do we need to withdraw the motion and then motion to table it?
So you're not ready to go ahead and propose it, then?
No, not right now. We're tabling it.
Yeah, you can do that. Someone needs to motion to table the motion.
So do I need to withdraw the motion?
You need to motion to withdraw the motion.
I'm just messing with me now.
Yeah.
Motion we table. You motion to withdraw the motion. You gotta vote motion to withdraw the motion. No, she said I didn't have to. Oh, I thought you did.
You can make the motion to table it.
The motion that we table, item number eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine. Discuss potential business taxes, Senate program policy. Ryan and Dave are both here.
I spoke to all of you, actually, independently at random times over the last three days. I'm here representing Economic Development Commission, and through our regular outreach contacts that I make alongside Dave and at times Tom Danish and before that Phil Moore, we regularly touch base with many businesses that are operating in town. We're often asked, are there any things that the town can help us to do to grow and to continue to hire more people here in town? And through many opportunities with the state of Connecticut, we've brought people in through DECD and other kind of different programs to help them. But we're also always looking for new and innovative ways to differentiate Madison as a place to want to do business in. So recently, with the help of Dave, we identified a state statute that already exists, and we are hoping to bring forward a set of guidelines. It would be a policy that would essentially allow Madison to have some curbs in place to allow for phased-in incremental tax increase to property values. And essentially, this is to provide guidelines for our programs that already exist. The Board of Selectmen is already authorized to alter tax phase-ins or tax abatements on property taxes. So what we'd like to do is to formalize what are the priorities for the town to do this. And each case is still a case-by-case opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to make an approval. And essentially, quickly, Dave handed out some guidelines. I had previously, Dave sent these to each of you before. These are updated based on some comments that we received from town staff here at Town Hall, as well as some comments that we heard from some of you. And essentially, it allows for us to provide a potential developer, somebody who wants to grow their business by making investment into their properties, an incentive to do so by phasing in the incremental tax increase. So as I mentioned, you know, throughout this process, this is only to grow the pie bigger. This doesn't, you know, shrink the pie or take anything away from an existing taxpayer. It's only on the incremental growth of the grant list.
So the intent after tonight, this is just being presented to you in draft form, we're not asking you to act on it tonight, just based on some of the guidance we received from you guys, I'd like to just bring this before the Board of Finance, just to let them know what we're thinking of doing, get any feedback from them, let it a little further through town staff, and then also make sure that I'm, my understanding is correct in terms of if we approve this policy at town meeting, which is the legislative body of the town, then the Board of Selectmen does have the authority to act on individual opinions. I believe that's the case, but I'll check that through on the town attorney. And then we will bring it back before you for action and then to set the town meeting to potentially adopt it.
But we already have, by state statute, the authority to do this.
If someone came in.
This is just creating a fence around it or creating some predictability in the process.
Correct. If someone came in today and said, I'd like a, this Section 12-65 be allows you to give up a 10-year abatement, could be a full abatement, if someone could come in and request, I'd like my taxes made it for 10 years because I'm constructing $10,000 of improvement on my property downtown. That's allowed under the state statute. So what we're trying to do is set a little bit of a higher bar for what people could come in and ask for and set some predictability in terms of what you might grant based on their request.
And then we're also trying to put something in our arsenal so that when we do have requests from people who say, so, thinking about, you know, growing the business in Madison, or I'd like to, you know, add 50 more people to this building and build out the building, that we have something that we can point to and say, yes, in fact, we do have a program in place, we have a policy in place to encourage that kind of growth, and there's some incentives tied to that. There are other towns that are doing this, the nearest ones, North Branford, and they have had success with it. I know, Gene, you asked for some examples recently when we spoke, and I'll get those for all of you to take a look at of other towns' use of this program. But it does, it gives us another tool in our toolbox to encourage responsible growth in the town.
Can you just walk us through the changes that you just handed us versus?
Yeah, so Gene, just to reorganize the purpose statement, the two thresholds about generating substantial positive impact on the grant list and creating new employment opportunities were buried a little bit further down in the document. Al had asked a question, that if both were required, is this one required? So it's one or the other. If you create this grant list growth but don't, grant list growth but don't create any new jobs, you're eligible for incentive. You create jobs and meet those thresholds, you're eligible for an extended incentive. If you discontinue jobs, then it's a little bit of a lesser incentive based on whatever improvement you make to the property. Then there was a question about whether single-family home development would be included. I had, when I was talking to Scott, now handed out an older version of this state statute. I had, when I was talking to Scott, now ended out an older version of this state statute. It's since been defined based on a public act, and the public act specifically details under the uses that are allowed, which is in the second paragraph, permanent residential use in conjunction with the residential property consisting of four or more dwelling units. So, it specifically excludes single-family home development, it will have to be multi-family properties that will be allowed to be incentivized under this program. But I didn't change the document in any way, I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that.
So, I think that one of, you know, we need to, you said, you mentioned town departments that we should talk to, being the finance department, the tax collector, and the tax assessor. I think I'd also like to find out, or make sure that there's no negative impact on our bond rating by doing something like this. You know, that's, that's something else I'd figure into.
Yeah, good point.
Any ideas?
I think, I think it's a great program.
Yeah, I'd like to commend everybody involved who developed this. It seems practical and pragmatic and relatively easy to administer.
It's all Ryan's fault.
And it blows up. We're going to get 10 of these next year, aren't we? Is that where?
At least, number 10, discuss and take action to approve line item transfers totaling $1,584.20. Okay, you have a copy of it in your packet. It's moving within the Building Department for Professional Technical Services to Staff Development and Revenues.
Other way around.
Versus, yeah. Okay, so we have motion to second in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Abigail White from the Water Poisoning Control Authority. So, I'd like to discuss this and make no motion at this point. Abigail is, this is a triggered resignation based on the fact that she moved out of town. Okay? She didn't realize that moving out of town would be currently knowledgeable to bring on her, her permission. I don't think she moved out of town permanently, she just moved out of town for whatever reason. So, rather than, they won't be having a meeting for two more months?
Yeah, they're only meeting quarterly now.
Right. So, we can put this up, we can table this for now, or we can get Abigail, because her stated goal is to move back to Madison. So, I think if we, if we can just table this for now and then.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Number 12, discuss and take action to approve the resignation of Jerry Koch for the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Do we have to, sorry, the last one? Do we have to do the formal table?
Oh, we're going to table it?
I'll make a motion to table action number 11.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I just read the resignation of Jerry Koch.
So, moved with our gratitude.
Indeed. I take it this is a busy time of the year for that body?
We need to point it quickly for working on it.
We're down several, I think, on that, because I think we've got a spot too.
Yeah, each, each town committee is down one position for their report.
I thought I had one this week.
And they do need to start appeal hearings very soon.
March 6th, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we've got, we've already interviewed, so we're going to.
Did we vote on that?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 13 tax abatements refunds, but there are none, right?
No, I don't see any in our packet.
Yeah, there are none.
Okay. Number 15, citizens' comments. Is it?
Is it working yet?
You tilted it a lot.
You should tilt it down. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, Jessica, I'm going to help out. I would just like to ask for clarification on the scheduled public hearing that's going to elicit discussion and comments about the fracking waste ban. Al, is there an ordinance language now? I mean, has, has the proposed draft been modified? What is it that's being, is it going to be presented to the hearing? I mean, if it's scheduled, do you have a file?
Yeah, the, the, it's really, this is a public comment, it's really not question and answer, so you're not supposed to answer. We've been working on the ordinance. Your turn is to move it through.
Okay, so is it, is it, might it be premature to have this public hearing set if the ordinance is finalized?
It's part of the process to.
We're marching towards the public hearing.
Okay, so the ordinance will be finalized before?
Yep.
The public hearing?
Right.
Okay, and, where's the second? Oh, I would encourage you to set up at this hearing, a presentation about the fracking waste ban. One would hope that this will not be a contentious subject and that, but you never know in this town. There could be people that are against it for one reason or another. So, I would encourage us to have a presentation to educate the people that come out to the public hearing. Brief, you know, I, I do know that Jane Siskind from Fillmore Watch does this for the public hearings, part of the votes for most of the towns that have taken a vote on this, and she's available, I'm sure she'd be happy to come. I don't know whether it might make sense to also have, can any answer questions? I mean, there just should be some expertise there to deal with the questions, because we're, the selectmen are not experts on this. Thank you.
Okay. Number 16, liaison reports, selectmen comments. Now, you're all ready to go.
I don't think I have one.
Yeah. I have to, but I'm, I'm struggling right now too, just giving all the time and energy to put it in the budget hearings.
I missed my last, so, planning and zoning because we were a bust.
Oh, I do have one. I can give you one. So, the, I don't know the actual answer, I'm going to get it later, but the Library Building Committee was meeting tonight to adopt the conceptual design. So, hopefully, we're here tonight, whether that is snapping the line and moving forward into detailed design.
I went to the recent special meeting of the Board of Education. Al was there. The agenda was to discuss the 1819 budget. What they ended up doing was voting to request a special appropriation of the town. I, I, I mean, I don't know specifically on this, but at first glance, it looks like maybe they opened the agenda to, in the special meeting?
Yes, I think you're right.
Okay, so, which, and if they did that, if that's what happened, then that vote wouldn't be a, a good one?
Yeah, I wasn't there, I don't know, actually.
So, it's an observation at this point, I don't know if it's, if it's clerical mistake that they're aware of or not, but it was something that I saw between reading the, you know, going to the meeting and then reading the minutes, that, that the meeting was problematic in that the motion wasn't available. So, I specifically went to the minutes to see exactly what it was that they voted.
Wasn't it on their agenda then, for the special meeting?
No, 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 it wasn't.
I don't know if it was on the agenda, there were five items in the minutes.
Oh, really? So, I don't know where that leaves them, I don't know where, I mean, they haven't come to us with anything, so maybe they're in the process of fixing that, that issue, if it is an issue.
Right.
But that's the only thing I would say. However, I would expect that once resolved, that was a unanimous vote of the board, that they asked the town for $120,000 in special appropriation. Unfortunately, we've already spent $120,000 that they're asking for, they were asking for Mercy Center money, we've already allocated that in our budget. I don't think they, and of course, we had already discussed that one before they voted, but I guess we'll keep our eyes open for that request to come in from them soon.
Hearing, nothing else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.